Ready. Call the meeting to order, if you would, join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll do the invocation. Lord, grant us the ability and wisdom to try to do the best we can for the people of the county. Thank you. Amen.
Get that printed up on a card.
Although I must admit, Lee does much better. Okay. This is deja vu all over again, didn't I sit here for awhile? Alright, the first thing is the adoption of the agenda. Before we begin, we have item five D, the minutes has been struck. Are there any other changes, additions, or whatnot to the agenda? Hearing none, I'd look for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, next we have special presentations and appearances. First would be from VDOT, Mark Nesbit.
Good evening Chairman, members of the board. I appreciate y'all having me up here this evening for my quarterly report on the VDOT activities. I think you should have a copy of the January report in your packet. We have the, as usual, projects in development. Basically, those are projects on a six-year plan with the milestones and proposed add dates. I have scheduled a meeting with Administrator Brian David in a couple of weeks to talk about La Horro Road and kind of get up to date on what we're doing with La Horro Road, or what we're proposing with La Horro Road. Sure will update the board on how that comes out and discussions on that. Everything else seems to be moving along. Projects under construction are listed. Guardrail contract is sort of a district-wide project, replacement rehabilitation of pipes. We're getting ready to advertise our resurfacing program for the year. And as soon as that project is awarded, I will provide y'all with a list of all the roads to be resurfaced for the FY fifteen. We have some plant mix resurfacing and some secondary, and some surface treatment roads. I will provide that probably within the next month. On our traffic studies, pending traffic studies, we have, on there, we have completed, there was a couple of projects requests that we had to look at pavement markings. And unfortunately, over the winter months, our marking equipment has been down and the weather's been an issue. So we're planning on putting a center line down on Mallory's Ford Road, a good length of section of Mallory's Ford Road. That hasn't been done yet, but it's still on our list to do, I imagine. And I anticipate that being done in early spring. Same thing with Mine Run Road, from Route twenty to Spotsylvania County Line. Put edge line markings on Mine Run Road. And that will hopefully, I mean, we should complete that as soon as it warms up in early spring.
Mark, on Mallory's Ford, is that marking going from the Orange County line to connect with the marking that exists in Louisa? Is that your understanding?
Yes, as well from Louisa County, what I've got here, Louisa County line from Route six forty-three Cox Mill Road to Louisa County line.
Right, that's, the rest of it is marked.
Right, this will be, this will complete that gap.
Okay.
And then we received a resolution from the board in August of last year to review the speed limit on Mine Run Road from Route twenty to the county line. And that was reviewed by Traffic Section. And their recommendation is to retain the fifty-five mile an hour speed limit. It's statutory, it's unposted mainly because of the eighty-fifth percentile speed, or fifty-nine sixty-two, which is above the posted, or not posted, but the statutory speed limit. And they also recommended safety signs review improved. We installed and updated three curve signs, three curve right signs, one curve left sign, and a school bus stop ahead sign. And also the pavement markings, we are going to modify the pavement markings to make, shorten up a no passing zone, as requested by one of the property owners. There was a request, it was not any resolution, but a request that was, I think, in the email that kind of called, that preceded that resolution about truck traffic on Route, on Route twenty-one, or six twenty-one. And VDOT does have a truck restriction policy, which I think some of you may be familiar with, where there has to be a public hearing, there has to be a suitable alternate route, that kind of thing. And if a suitable alternate route can be identified and the public hearing held, and then the county would need to provide a resolution. And then VDOT would study it and either deny or approve or deny it. And that would be up to the board to whether they want to pursue that any further. So that's the status on that Mine Run Road. And I will get a copy of the speech study into you guys, so you can have that to review. I've received a request from Supervisor Johnson several months ago also to review Route six sixty-five Hardwick Mountain Road, which is a short section of road off of Route twenty, west of, on the west side of the county. And I did forward our traffic calming information to Supervisor Johnson. I've also scheduled a traffic review, or traffic engineering review of that road to see if the speed limit can be reduced any. Our traffic calming policy requires the speed limit to be twenty-five miles per hour. I think that road currently is posted at forty. So we'll look at it, see if that speed limit is appropriate. If it's not, then we're back to, I mean, if it is appropriate, we're back to an enforcement issue with the Sheriff's Office.
The, this came up because when the neighbors complained to the sheriff, he came out and said, well, you need to call your supervisor to get the speed limit lowered. So we're in a little bit of a ping pong match here as far as the neighbors are concerned.
Unfortunately, the speed limit is forty. I rode the road, it's short, it couldn't possibly go to thirty-five, I don't know until they actually look at it. But, you know, it's still going to be an enforcement issue if they're already speeding, but we'll see. But I apologize for the delay in getting that completed, we will get that done very near future. Also received a request to look at Route, the intersection of Route six thirty-three and six sixteen, which is Spicer's Mill Road and Monford Road. And we've received a request to look at this previously. And we have a new traffic engineer that's been, that came on board last year, I believe it was in May of last year. So he wasn't involved in the previous review, so I asked him to take a look at it with some fresh eyes to see if he, if there's anything that he saw that wasn't caught in one of the previous reviews. And the only thing he could come up with was to add a stop bar at that, at the intersection, the six thirty-three approach, to the intersection and a double yellow center line to sort of provide some additional visual cue to, you know, that is a stop condition. I just spoke with Supervisor Johnson, he gave me, filled me in on a little bit of the history there about the previous stop condition was different than what it is today. And I'll make sure that the traffic folks are aware of that. And I'll get you a formal response to that after I get a chance to talk with them again on that.
Okay.
So that's where those issues stand.
Is that actually right out there by Monford where Spicer's Mill used to come in, you had to stop?
Yeah, it's where Spicer's Mill, that real sharp curve, turns and goes toward twenty. And there was a little dead end road that tailed back off to the right.
Okay.
There didn't used to be a stop sign on Spicer's Mill, you just continued on through the intersection. But now there's a stop sign there. And the real, the problem, again, is that according to, with the people who travel through there a lot, their complaint is that they have to get halfway out into the intersection before they can get visibility back to the right. So I mean, that's really, it's not really an issue of the stop sign or who's stopping, it's visibility is the problem.
Okay.
And one other item that's not in the report, but met with the planning, I guess he's interim planning director, Josh, or is he? I don't know if he's, what his title is now.
Acting.
Acting. And out at his Flat Run Court Road, I think in your area, Mr. Crozier. And I sent him some follow-up information on resurfacing costs and, you know, we'll keep in touch on that issue.
Right, on that subject, since y'all had paved a road that you didn't realize you paved here a few months ago, I wonder if we could take the money for the resurfacing or paving of that road and put it towards Flat Run Court and the other court. Do you remember, I'd have to go back through the minutes, but there was a court that got paved that y'all were getting ready to pave and said, oh, it's already been done.
I'd be glad to talk with you offline about that.
Yeah, but maybe we could take and transfer that, since say we're supposed to go into the system and everything.
We can, we can talk about that offline.
Right, okay, fantastic.
Yes, sir.
Very good.
If nothing else, that's to conclude my report.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Mark. Alright, next we will try the presentation, the Visit Orange County video.
Speaking of deja vu.
Yes.
I feel like we've done this one more.
We have both Andrew and Laura here.
Yes, I've got them both standing on guard. I asked them both earlier, I was like, I'm not touching it, I'm walking up and introducing it, I'm letting them touch it because I don't want to have anything to do with it not working this time. He tried to blame it on me last time anyway, so I'm bowing out of this one. But once again, gentlemen, thank you for having me up here this evening. I'm here to introduce the Visit Orange County, Virginia video that we're very proud of. Jay Billy is here with me, who was integral in the project. David Skabel couldn't be here this evening unfortunately. But this was a wonderful example of a public-private partnership with the tourism office and with public-private businesses to bring this wonderful marketing piece to Orange, so.
You're actually very good with the sound.
Yes, it is, very good with the sound.
Welcome to the heart of the Old Dominion, Orange County, Virginia, where you'll find something fun for everyone. Award-winning wineries, unparalleled store sites, exquisite accommodations and dining, outdoor adventure, and local festivals, all with stunning views of the Blue Ridge Mountains, right here in Orange County, Virginia.
Forbes four-star dining and accommodations, right here in Orange County, Virginia.
Award-winning lodging and unsurpassed hospitality, right here in Orange County, Virginia.
Y'all shop till you drop, right here in Orange County, Virginia.
Where down-home cooking even satisfies the toughest critic, right here in Orange County, Virginia.
Find unique objects, right here in Orange County, Virginia.
Fantastic accommodations, extended by beautiful surroundings, right here in Orange County, Virginia.
Award-winning wines crafted right here in Orange County, Virginia.
Incredible food, right here in Orange County, Virginia.
Southern Living Hotel Collection, right here in Orange County, Virginia.
James Madison's Montpelier, where the United States Constitution was first imagined, right here in Orange County, Virginia.
Right off into the sunset, right here in Orange County, Virginia.
This is kind of the District One Travel on.
Yeah, little stint over in three.
You got into three a time or two, but that was great.
We hope y'all like it as much as we do. The finished product exceeds our expectations, I think Jay can agree with me on that very much. And when I last talked with David Skabel, about the end of last week, it had been viewed over four thousand times in about a week period of time.
I was just going to ask you if you had any feedback.
So, oh yes, we've, it was shared about a hundred and fifty times off of our Facebook page when we posted it last Wednesday. And it's been viewed over four thousand times already, so we're definitely getting some mileage out of it and can't wait to see those numbers grow, so.
And it's on Vimeo?
Yes, it is, but it's on our website as well. And it's welcome for businesses all around the county. All they have to do is contact us and we'll be welcome to share the link with them so they can share it on their websites as well.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Great.
Thank you, Lee. Okay, next would be public comment. Do we have anyone signed up? Okay, in that case, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Sands, the minutes, could I get a motion to approve?
Aye.
Second?
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Department Director, Constitutional Officer Reports, Economic Development Quarterly Report, Tommy.
Evening Chairman, Board Supervisors. You realize how small the podium space was up here? I have just a brief oral report here, quarterly report. As you all know, just over three months on the job now. And kept a little bit of the format from what you guys might have seen, what you all might have seen in the past. And so this is going to be a working document in the future here. But our employment levels of last, most recent availability is at four point nine percent. That is extremely low. Obviously, we're not the lowest within the region and the state is lower as well, which does give us some competitive advantage on the marketing, business attraction side, showing we do have some available workforce here. However, it does get a little competitive when unemployment rates are that low. Good news is, for those looking for work, it is a little more competitive, less competitive where they have some more bargaining power when looking for employment around the community and the region as a whole. That being said, our workforce center numbers, I'm still gauging and learning more about these, but they are on the increase of entertaining more services. Folks looking for work out there has been an increase of some people who weren't looking for labor in the past, who are now out there looking for work, as well as we're seeing an older population that in the past had not taken advantage of the services, it's coming back and using them as well. Our prospect.
Tommy, do you have any feel for how much local businesses are using that resource?
I'm still gauging that right now, but it's a good follow-up to ask.
It'd be interesting to see, this report, I'm assuming is the worker side. It'd be interesting to see what we can learn from the businesses that are using it.
Yeah, I'll follow up with the staff there and see how we can kind of track what local businesses are using that. I know they were excited when I did make my introductions that over the last three months have been really aggressive meeting with lots of folks and they were one of the folks I reached out to and said, you know, really want to lean on our office some more to get some of that interaction going that hasn't been there in the past. So definitely want to help with that. Our prospect activity, I thought was pretty good. We had fifteen requests through both the state and our regional partners at the Charlottesville, or at the Central Virginia Partnership, as well as a handful of direct leads with some of our existing businesses and some potential startup companies. Our website traffic has also increased. It's expanded with new unique visitors. The only kind of down you'll see in trends is a little bit in the number of pages visited and the time on the pages. But it's kind of fractional, fractional changes there. And then I just want to go through some bullet points to tell you what I've been doing. As I mentioned earlier, I have been out doing a lot of outreach, looking to meet our large employers as well as some of our departmental directors, so meeting with all of my EDA board and other folks. For instance, I've met with the folks at MPS, Zama, and Aerojet, and even some of our smaller businesses from the retail shops, some of the antique stores, Palm, et cetera. Not last board meeting, but I think prior one, we met and approved us moving forward on the AFID grant. And things looked very positive there. We're just waiting from VDOTs to go through their processes and making sure the governor, you know, releases it at what's timely and convenient for him to make the best marketing ploy and announcement as he can. And again, that study will be looking at partnering with Virginia Tech and assessing ways we can look at new revenue streams for Montpelier Foundation. On us, also, we're working, we've been working hand-in-hand with Draper Aiden, looking at new marketing for the Thomas Ely Industrial Park and potential pad sites out there. We did have a meeting this morning and are moving forward at potentially putting bids out there just to get a scope of what those costs might be. And then on a sadder note, Parago, one of our kind of local companies that grew here in Gordonsville, they were purchased, which was originally PBM, they were purchased a few years ago by Parago, much larger international firm. And after their five-year agreement with their lease, they moved to the Charlottesville area in Albemarle. I think it's called Pan Tops near the Martha Jefferson Hospital. That was mainly a management decision where most of management lived closer to that area. And they were looking for a modern office space. The good news there is though, you know, they stayed within the region, so those folks that were employed are, still have those jobs and are able to stay in the community. That being said, with one going out, working hand-in-hand with one coming in, and that's Green Applications. And they are, I'd say probably around thirty-five employees right now. And they're on track to hire three employees a week. They should have three new lines of equipment coming in the second, third week of February, which will continue to ramp up their hiring there. I've also been helping them, looking at hiring a handful of management slash C-level employees and kind of looking the full gamut across the country right there with them. Also, a company worked with Homestead Building Systems. We went into a performance agreement with them last year and they met their performance agreement of hiring forty employees and putting in at least seven hundred fifty thousand dollars in investment. And so we did come through with our grant to them of ninety-eight hundred dollars for meeting their agreement. I've also been working on setting dates for kind of visioning sessions for our strategic planning. The economic development does not currently have a strategic plan. So we are going to be meeting this Thursday with Chamber members, as well as the Orange Downtown Alliance. We also have scheduled dates with the Business Development Group up in Locust Grove, community groups up at Lake of the Woods, as well as the, looking at scheduling something with some of the school board and those involved in our workforce and education. Back in November, we had one of our first workshops with the Small Business Development Center. Something we set up right before the holidays on, we titled it From Bah Humbug to Booming Holiday Sales. And it was a pretty good success. We had, I want to say between a dozen to dozen and a half folks attend that event. And to keep that success going, on February twenty-fifth, we're going to be hosting a Growing the Business with the Internet Workshop. And it's going to be kind of a full day in Orange with the Small Business Development Center. They're going to talk about doing business on the internet, everything from setting up a website to proper marketing techniques through social media. And then they'll be doing one-on-one consultations afterwards. They'll be doing kind of Business One-O-One Startup at another location in the town of Orange. Just an update also on coming through the RYE. I know you'd asked about a release date on that, and there isn't a release date. In the steps they're coming on marketing, it's going to be submitted to the film festivals at Cannes, Tred Becka, Telluride in Toronto, where they hope to get a buyer then, that will then distribute it through their channels of marketing and hope to have that released with the right partnership and buyer by the end of the year of two thousand fifteen. And skip a couple of other items here, we have been updating our social media and we officially launched our first quarterly newsletter today. And that kind of rounds up my general summary of what's been going on. I'll take any questions you might have.
Yeah, I have one. Actually, I asked it, but our friends at Parago, did they ever come to the Economic Development Office to ask anything since they apparently canvassed Orange County?
No, they never, and even before I arrived, I asked that, there was no interaction that we found with the Economic Development Office. When I first heard about the rumor, I immediately tried to make outreach with Parago and wasn't very successful. So I walked in, one day coming into work and met with some admin folks there and learned a little bit more. But I do have kind of an exit interview, phone calls scheduled this, I think it's this week, with some of the management, just to get a better understanding of maybe some of the other reasons or why they left and also know kind of the positives and negatives. So moving forward, when we help to market that property, we'll be able to improve on going forward. And I did also meet with the owner of the building, Paul Manning, kind of get a vision of what he has. I was hoping for the golden parachute, that he'd already had some side company that was kind of growing, ready to go, that he could kind of fill one or two of the buildings and flourish from there. But that wasn't the case, but he does have a vision and wants to fill up the buildings.
Well, I hope they enjoy their ride to Charlottesville Airport because they traded a twenty-five minute ride for a... When are they starting to tear up Rio Road and twenty-nine? What's it, an hour and a half driving out of the airport?
That's right.
So we don't look so bad. Alright, anybody else? I had to get that in, I'm sorry, it just really irked me. Thank you, Tommy.
Thank you.
County Attorney's Report.
Nothing.
Appears you have nothing, sir.
I have nothing.
Okay. County Administrator's Report, you do have something.
Yes, sir, yes, sir, I have three items and then there are two just informational that just put out in front of your chairs. The first thing with the German and Wilderness Plan Update, the committee met, goodness, it was January twelfth, Monday, January twelfth. And the purpose of this meeting was to review the written comments that had come in the door during the public comment period. What you have before you is the substance, it's the eleven-by-seventeen page. What you have before you is the substance, it's the eleven by seventeen page. The committee went through comment by comment, and I guess Jim's the only, Mr. White's the only one here, Lee. But a lot of good discussion, some modifications and other things. They have worked through all of those, but Hill Studios, which had pretty voluminous comments. We are, staff is preparing responses to those commenters. Committee is due to meet on Monday, you know, oh, no, Tuesday or Wednesday next week, Tuesday, thank you. Next week to review those responses and then go through the last commenter of Hill Studio. I don't want to presuppose what the committee would be doing, but there could be a chance that at that or maybe the very next meeting that this will be ready for forwarding on to the Planning Commission, the Economic Development Board. So the comments range from very general to very specific, and I think there are things that have been modified. And some of the general comments were difficult to find how to change the document because of some of the, just the general nature of the comments, so.
Brian, you said staff is going to contact the commenters or respond to them. What is, explain what that process is like.
Yes, sir, Mr. Johnson, what I mean is that there was a clear directive from the committee that everybody that took the time to write a comment, that the committee would send a response to that comment of whether they made modifications based on those comments, whether they took them under advisement, just what was the disposition of each comment. So that there was that kind of call and respond. Based on the input from the committee, I'm preparing those responses, and we'll have those as part of the agenda. So I took, you know, we took notes and followed the general discussions of the committee.
Yeah, I mean, as you might expect, the comments run the gamut in terms of, you know, fix the third line on page seven to say this word instead of that word. Two general comments, some, you know, that we like it, some that we don't.
Yeah, I just went through them.
They're all over the map. And so the responses will be crafted accordingly. I will, I will say the Steering Committee spent, really, I guess it was in excess of two hours going comment by comment to try to, you know, you know, understand the comment and use it as productively as we could to help improve the document. Because we're coming up on the time where this will be ready, we think, at least from the Steering Committee's perspective, we'll be ready to ask the Planning Commission to start their formal process of hearing and deliberation and public hearings and these kind of things. And ultimately, it's gonna come back here to, because it will be, the plan is that it becomes a part of the comprehensive plan. Comprehensive plan calls for this doc, this plan to be prepared, and it would be, it would go through the same process that the plan, comprehensive plan itself would.
The EDA, also, they just had their meeting Thursday of last week, and they're prepared to, while they don't have a formal public hearing process, they're very much looking forward to being able to review the document and then offer up their recommended version or, I'm not saying they're gonna make any edits or changes, but they look forward to advising the board on the document, at least from their perspective.
One of the topics that the Steering Committee has talked about now for the last several meetings as we were getting closer to finalizing this draft, of course, is that the real work starts now, as we try to find out how to implement and find ways of using this plan as a guide. There's a lot of work to be done in terms of zoning and design standards and these kind of things. There's tremendous amount of work to be done in terms of utility questions, not the least of which is where the heck we're gonna get enough water to do anything beyond what we're doing right now and the like. So there's a, this really just starts the heavy lifting, frankly.
And the Steering Committee did take some time to walk through, okay, since they're going to be Evergreen, they're not once this process, that they're going to have still this advisory and kind of think tank process. It really boiled down to utilities, transportation, and land use development. That was kind of the three buckets that work will continue on the plan. The other work that needs to be done, and the EDA discussed this, is that there's quite a bit of work for the EDA to do, particularly with regards to formulating an incentive program, formal incentive program for the county, particularly as it may relate to this area plan, a marketing plan for this area, and a number of other implementation steps. So the EDA certainly is understanding of its role in this and kind of continuing their work from their perspective.
Yeah, there's a lot of decisions, work to be done, decisions to be made regarding economic development zones and technology zones and special taxing districts and on and on and on. It's, like I said, the heavy lifting is just about to begin.
That's all I had.
Okay. And we have a jail update?
Yes, sir. As you know, we're working with the jail authority and our representatives to better understand the expansion project. As you, the only action item I have for you is, and I'll get to that, the other, we are meeting, this was a working group. We're a member, where there were, I think, representatives of the jail authority, jail superintendent and his staff, and then two county administrators. Mr. Early Hope, Mr. Hope from Madison, and Christian Goodwin from Louisiana were probably the ones that were best situated to represent, were serve on this group. The other three administrators are attending these meetings, so it's not like I'm not gonna be there. And so tomorrow, we're having a meeting, tomorrow afternoon, to better understand the proposed budget and see if there's some opportunities to spread some of these expansion costs out. I will have more information after tomorrow that I'll certainly communicate to each board member. So right now, it's still pretty much a work in progress. I have every confidence we're going to be able to come up with some plan that hopefully spreads these over several fiscal cycles rather than front-loading it essentially in the front. Mothballing or just building it and leaving it sit there, I don't think, or stopping, let me back up, stopping it now just doesn't, just, we're too far down into construction. What, how we fill it after that, after getting a tour of the last meeting of the existing plant, clearly, clearly, the kitchen is obsolete. It's functionally, doesn't work. As these successive expansions have gone on, the jails, jail over these last twenty years, the kitchen was never upgraded. So their essentially doubled, or throughput has doubled for that kitchen, and the floor space of the commercial kitchen has stayed the same. In fact, there's only one dishwasher, serving four hundred and some odd inmates. It's not a cafeteria that we are accustomed to, the trays are sent to the pods, so the criminal, the inmates, excuse me, where they are.
Some are criminals, a few of at least.
Are eating, sleeping, living, they don't move, and so all of this. I was, I was impressed by the jail staff in that cafeteria being able to do what they had to do in little space. So part of this is working through getting this new kitchen online to meet current deficiencies. So we'll see, and as soon as I know more, I'll certainly share it back with you all. Before I go into this next item, are there any questions?
Maybe we do a fundraiser with past alumni.
I don't happen to come.
Do you want to deal specifically with the letter?
Yes, sir. It was recommended by the jail superintendent that Senator Reeves and Delegate Scott and had proposed, as I explained, and this really just gains us four months, I think, of additional funding from the comp board. At this point, we will take everything we can get, so I would recommend or approve and authorize the chair. And then instead, we can have Mr. Goodwin do this to get this out to Senator Reeves and Delegate Scott.
I'm certainly fine with it.
Yep. Do we need an official motion?
No, I'll take that as a sense of the board, we'll get this thing drafted up for Mr. Goodwin to, if I share the sound, and we'll get it out the door tomorrow.
Okay.
All right. Next item, good news on the financial front. We've been advised by the Virginia Public School Authority that there is a refunding bond tentatively scheduled in the coming months that would refinance at essentially a lower interest rate. I'll lean on Glenda to answer any specific questions, but in general, what this means is the lower interest rate reduces the amount of money that we have to pay beyond the principal. And what that means is next year, we have realized a fifty-five thousand, about fifty-five thousand dollars in interest savings. And then the present value of that over the balance of the term is three hundred and...
One is over two hundred thousand, the other one is over nine hundred thousand.
Nine hundred, boy, I was off the mark on that. It's over a million dollars interest savings, so. So my, our recommendation is to authorize VDX to execute the certificate of refunding for the local school bond. Just as a belt and suspenders approach, since you all are doing this, we, it was recommended to have the school board do the likewise thing for the school superintendent.
Do we have some reason to believe that both of these bonds, the two thousand seven and the two thousand nine, in fact, will be included in the refunding? Because there's somewhere in here, they do their, they cover themselves by saying, you know, we don't know at this point which ones would have, maybe, maybe, maybe. I mean, is there any update on that maybe?
No, not at this point, but I think before, well, our deadline to let them know if we were going to sign on for it is the seventeenth of February. So I think closer to the end of February, we might have, you know, a better idea, but they really won't know until they get a market.
Right.
We are going to be budgeting what our principal and interest payment is for next year at the current rate. We're not booking any amended number until we know it's actually happened.
Well, in any given year, it's not, you know, not a huge amount, but a few months of the year over the life of the bond, it is clearly.
Pretty sure we've gone through this process several times over the years. I don't recall there was ever a, we ever got our nose pushed in. Doesn't mean it won't happen this time around, but I think it's, as long as you've got a qualifying bond, I think it's pretty likely you're gonna get in there.
So our recommendation is to authorize me to execute.
Saves money.
Yep. Sounds like a plan to me.
Go for it.
Need a motion or not?
Oh, we do need a motion?
Yes, sir.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four oh with one absentee.
Great, thank you, gentlemen. Last two items are just informational, they're not on the agenda. I put out in front of your chairs information that just came over from Virginia Institute of Government about an hour before the meeting. Weldon Cooper has come out with their demographic, population projections and growth and population estimates for the last year. Mr. White quickly noted I wasn't speaking correctly, I thought we had grown three percent in the last year, three percent since, and I was speed reading.
Three percent over fifty months.
Fifty months, so it better reflects what our, I guess, our building permits trends tend to look at. I am going, and there's an interesting newsletter about school.
Yeah, interesting.
And that was from November, I missed that one.
How did we gain, how did we gain, how did we gain population but lose school? Is there any difference in these two?
Yeah, one shows just the total trend, and the other one shows net death, burst, net migration, the components. The one that's horizontal, the landscape one is...
Oh, okay, I see, it's got a, yeah, okay. Yeah, I actually saw this earlier today and actually went and printed off a copy, but I couldn't find the school enrollment numbers. Are they out there yet? Or they maybe sent it?
The only thing I saw was this newsletter from, it was November of fourteen was the latest, the thing that Weldon Cooper had on their website. We're sending this out to the area plan Steering Committee, Route Three Steering Committee tomorrow. But we're also copying the board supervisors, the Planning Commission, the EDA on the same information. We have a link in that you can go through to the Weldon Cooper site, it has where all of this information.
Yeah, yeah.
It's interesting how well they, assuming my very quick math was about right, the, that three percent over the fifty month translates into about seven tenths of eight percent on an annualized basis, less than one percent. And we did about ninety-five, ninety-two, ninety-five building permits for single-family homes this past year. And at our typical two point two three people per, two point two eight people per resident, that works out to a couple hundred new folks per year. Guess what, a couple hundred new folks per year, that's where we are, so they're lining up. The oddball is the schools, you're exactly right. That's the one that didn't seem to track, so I don't know if it's just a demographic shift or what's going on, but it was, it was significant, of course.
And if you look at Loudon and Fairfax, just to me, too, they added more than Orange County's entire population in the last four years.
I would also encourage you to go to the website, there's a map that sets up all kinds of, I guess, slice and dice in numbers. They have a lot of poverty indexes as it looks at the entire state, and then Orange County's share, and it's actually, interactive map, it's pretty neat that they do that. And then they go out to the twenty forty, Weldon Cooper's calling twenty forty about forty-four thousand population. Which is pretty consistent, I think, where they've been working on this. So I put that out for you all as information. The last thing is just, we had originally scheduled, but because of the facility, the consultant couldn't make it because of a severe illness that required hospitalization, our continuity of operations planning for the county's government that's being run by Chief Harkness and is coming out of public safety because of funds availability, but we're kicking that off. This is bringing in the entire general government of the county to think through, in a facilitated sense, what would we do to continue operations in the event of a man-made or a natural disaster? Even down to that, how would we continue to make payroll, I mean, you know, on continued operations? So we will have a report at some point along the continuum, either as a midterm or a concluding report and back to the board on what that, what the plan is.
Is that strictly for county funded operations, county operations, any of the volunteer organizations included in that?
I think at this point, we're just, we're keeping with the county operations, but I think when John and I were kind of bring, we're gonna, this is gonna shift itself out, certainly the volunteer. There's very much a public safety function to this.
Right.
Then there's a county operations function, and I think we're at the, we're really at the beginning of kind of moving this thing out. So, you know, the volunteer agency, absolutely critical, particularly in disaster recovery. So I wanted to make you all aware of that. That's all I had for the board.
Okay. So the... Okay, support letter for Rappahannock Rapidan Community Services then.
I think, Mr. Chairman, this is, that is a board's annual thing Mr. Duncan does to purchase vans in order to comply with some of his funding streams. It's a recommended move, I understand.
So move.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay. And then we have the proposed board of supervisors' financial policies. Mr. Johnson and Mr. White.
Let me just, if I, gentlemen, if I could just do a quick housekeeping of what had to happen since the last... Let me just, if I, gentlemen, if I could just do a quick housekeeping of what we got to happen since the last meeting, but this came before you on January thirteenth. Uh, we did spend, send it to Davenport Company. They had one minor change, and let me, uh, let Glenda explain to you what that was.
It's a lot of paper for a minor change.
Yeah, sorry about that. It's just on page six, as part of the fund balance policy, and they suggested that in the paragraph, that's, um, the real second full paragraph on page six, that we add the phrase, uh, "for the same year" to, uh, to specify which budget year we're using to measure our fund balance. As you know, the CAFR that's published for June thirtieth of each year is the one that we use to calculate the fund balance. Uh, but the policy didn't really say, are you comparing it to the, um, budget for that same year of the CAFR? Are you comparing it to your new budget, because the new budget's in place by then? So we just wanted it to be as clear as possible. And we also had already added the, um, the phrase about it being at June thirtieth, being the measure, measuring date, because that wasn't in it before.
So it's for you all's discussion and action.
So are we just adding a year?
Yeah, the, the language, I think, is in that second full paragraph at the very end.
For that same year.
Those words, "for the same year."
For that same year.
Okay, okay, so that's what they were asking for, was that?
Okay. So we, we did that based on their recommendation, other than that, it's the same document before we do our last meeting.
Well, you did, you did change the debt policy one to, uh, become, address the short-term debt being things like lease purchase agreements and the...
Yeah, I think those were some earlier, as, based on discretion.
That, that was based on the last time we had a meeting.
That was the only other change that I, that I saw, which looked fine. You, you looking for, are you looking for a motion?
I would be, yes.
I, uh, move that we adopt this, these sets of policies here before us.
Second.
Motion to second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries.
I, I've just mentioned that this, it says Supervisor Johnson and White, but Jim did about eighty percent of it. I maybe, I maybe did twenty percent, so Jim, Jim's the one that really worked on this and hammered it into shape, so, I appreciate that.
E- e- even if that is partially true, it's only be- because we started this at the board retreat earlier before you got involved, but.
Before I was bored.
I tell you, the, the, sitting down on, on several occasions, sort of as a, as a committee, if you wanna think of it that way, and, and taking a specific i- idea like this and beating it around is a, is a helpful way to work on, on some of these things. We've got a few more coming down the path that, uh, that I'm thinking that, it, it's, takes a lot of time, and it's not, it's not without a downside in terms of that, but it's, you can, you can make some progress, I think, doing that. It's, it's very hard to, to do it here, especially with all of us and, and things like that, so. I, in this case, I think we, we set out to do something at our retreat and I think we.
Something that was very important, uh, between the two of you and staff.
Yeah, it was, it was, it was a good process, I think. And I think we, we have something that hopefully Davenport and, and that slice of the community that we deal with are, are comfortable with this and the likes, so, yeah.
So they definitely expressed that they were comfortable with it.
One other thing, there are other policies that the committee will work on with, with staff that are forthcoming, kind of the same process that we engaged the full board on, so.
So, yeah, we are gonna continue to, the committee's gonna keep, you know, I was thinking we should have, in January, that committee really should have been added, you know, onto the, onto the list of committees there.
You're right, it is, it is a formal committee, you're, you're absolutely right.
Can we do that post-it message?
No, it, it was on there, I, I think.
We, um, it was included on the cover memo that was attached with the committee assignments, and, um, I do have both Supervisors Johnson and White.
I haven't seen an updated one, I guess, cause I don't remember seeing it, but.
They slid it in there, huh?
Yes.
We, we made the minutes reflect.
Okay.
Did we approve those minutes yet?
No, they were pull off the, yeah, pull off the consent down.
All right.
Uh, just, I think the board's well served by having a standing committee that deals with these issues. Uh, that should, you know, there's nothing else there.
Nope, there's no old business. Uh, board comment?
We're gonna get to, uh, some of the information items here shortly. There, it, it strikes me that, once again, the Rapidan Service Authority had their regular.
Three-minute meeting?
And they spent six hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars in a meeting that lasted three minutes. We need to learn something from them if they can be effective at that, so I, uh... I'm, I'm, I'm beginning to think we need to take a good, hard look at this, because as part of the Route Three visioning, planning, small area planning process, water is, as I mentioned before, water's gonna be a critical issue, water and sewer, both are critical issues. And there's, uh, there's an open question in my mind as to how we get those utilities provided. Obviously, there's, there's a question as to whether RSA is the right, uh, entity to do that going forward, particularly when you look from a fifty-year point of view.
Times have changed from when that authority was created and how they, how their services are provided.
It's a, it's been a problem for a lot of years, and it's nice to hear someone besides myself saying that.
There's, there's gotta be a better way out there, plain and simple.
Well, and I mean, there, there are issues that we need to wrestle with in terms of, you know, at, at the moment, it's water and sewer. There, there's the potential that a service authority for that area needs to be more than just water and sewer. In many communities, it is. It can include other kinds of things. In some communities, it's broadband, as an example. Solid waste is included in some cases, so there's a, there's a service authority for a specific geographic area, can be lots of things. And so all I'm doing is saying, I think we need to open up the, the discussion at, at some point in time about what that needs to be, what it, in the context of the, the overall Route Three area. I don't have the answer, but I, I know the question needs to be asked.
I still think at some point, Karen's gonna be very unhappy when we go into water business.
I, I don't, I'm gonna be very unhappy in the water business as well, uh, but, you know.
But I believe we can be a little less unhappy than we currently are.
If it's only a three-minute meeting every little, once in a while, we can do that.
Absolutely.
You got six hundred and eighty-five spent, okay, next meeting.
I wish I could work that efficiently for you all.
I said there's something to be learned.
Yep.
I, I don't know that I want you to be quite that efficient.
I don't, I don't think we wanna get to their burn rate there. That's two hundred and thirty thousand dollars a minute, I think.
It's pretty.
That's federal level.
Yeah, really, that's big legs.
Well.
So is there more?
That's my comment.
Is there something more positive we can talk about now?
Point is, uh...
As I stated, is there something more positive we can talk about now?
Almost time for dinner.
Yeah.
So, uh, any additional board comment? Okay. Anything then on the informational items, except for what we've already covered? Lawfully appointments to work.
I've been working on it today and still.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, anything on the calendar?
Is there anything, uh, uh, on the calendar that's been altered or changed, or any surprises?
I'd just like to make a comment on the calendar. I did have a very exciting forty minutes checking my email one day because of Allison's efficiency, which I truly do appreciate, and put everything on in the right place on the calendar. Thank you, Allison.
I, I didn't see it until March, but apparently I'm gonna be a rep to the, uh, uh, Rappahannock River Basin Commission, which meets in, on the eighteenth of March. If you have any more information about that, I'd be nice to know where they meet and that kind of stuff, cause I, at the moment, I have nothing, so. If you would, if you could help me out a little bit there, I'd appreciate it.
Okay.
That was the Rappahannock River Basin?
I think that's what it was. Isn't it? Rappahannock River Basin Commission.
Yes.
To be honest with you, I didn't know there was such a thing.
All righty then, uh, that concludes our regular session, and now we have closed session, so.
All right, well, whereas the Board of Supervisors of Orange County desires to discuss in closed meeting the following. Discussion consideration of salaries of specific public employees, and whereas pursuant to section two point two thirty-seven eleven A one of the Code of Virginia, such discussions may occur in closed meeting, now therefore be resolved that on the twenty-seventh day of January twenty fifteen, that the Orange County Board of Supervisors hereby authorize discussion of the force in matter in closed meeting.
So move.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. We're enclosed.
Are we going somewhere?
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that to the best of our knowledge, uh, the only matters discussed in the closed meeting were public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion uh, by which the closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting.
Second.
Okay, I need a roll call.
Mr. Goodwin?
Aye.
Mr. White?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Breen who's absent, and Mr. Crozier.
Aye.
Okay, so we're back in the open session. I have no further business to conduct.
I move that we return.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're done.